Like I skip over you every time you read it first and then we certify?
I ain't doing either, well.
I'll let you read it first.
Yeah, I mean if I'm reading it, it'll probably be the best.
So I know we bump you every time.
Whereas the King William County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such executive meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the King William County School Board hereby certifies that the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification applies. And on two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion to meaning the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Mr. Farmer.
I certify.
Mr. Wassenberg.
I certify.
Ms. Atkins. Ms. Frazier.
I certify.
Ms. Caffrey.
I certify. Alright, still read the motion?
Now you need to.
Yeah, alright, I need a motion to certify as a closed session.
Motion certify.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Alright. Now for all who are able, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by amendment of silence? Alright. And Mr. Wagner, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. And for the folks that are here in the audience, thank you for being here tonight and those that are listening from home. We appreciate your attendance. Welcome to June and welcome to summer. I do have one addition, Madam Chair, and that is I guess a presentation item, it would be the introduction of the King William High, the new King William High School Athletic Director. And that would be the only change to the agenda and if we could, we could start with that item first.
Oh, perfect, okay. Alright, so then we'll do what, four point one? Or where do you want to put it?
Maybe we'll have this as Ms. Hutcheson, should, should this be, should this be maybe the new five point one?
Yeah.
And we'll just bump, bump everything down. So five point one, the introduction of the new King William High School Athletic Director.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Hang on one second, I'm so sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the changes to the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Alright.
During the last few months, we have gone through the process of selecting an athletic director for King William High School. Throughout the interview process, we had applicants who applied. We put together a panel of teachers and coaches, senior staff and administration to then go through the process and interview our applicants. We are so pleased to announce that we have an athletic director who has already begun with us as our board has voted to take that recommendation from the panel. And our athletic director is working to transition our program to be ready to begin with our fall sports. And I bring to you tonight, Mr. Patrick Kane, never turning face.
Thank you, excited to be back. I had a small stint here at King William. I was a math teacher and assistant football coach here for about a year and a half. And then I had the corporate world come calling and I thought I was retired. And then this opportunity, I was presented that this might be open and I applaud and very excited to come back to King William. I have a little history with King William. I was at Orange High School for seventeen years as the head football coach and math teacher there. And Scott Moore was with me for sixteen years and then he recruited Sammy Jackson, another King William graduate. About ten years, so I had all the King William stories told in the, in the coach's office before I came there. Any place I wanted to come to, so when Scott Moore got the head football job here. We spoke and I decided to come here and, and help him get started on his, his career. And I was very fortunate, my timing was very good, because we were able to win the state championship in my short time here as, as an assistant coach. Little brief history about myself, I, my father was a high school wrestling coach and government teacher at Meadowbrook High School for many years, matter of fact, the gymnasium was named after him. And so I was a wrestler and a football player growing up. I was fortunate, I played Division Three football. And then went back to my alma mater, which is Cloverhill, they're Cavaliers. So once Cavalier, always Cavalier. And I was a wrestling coach there and a football coach. I'm very fortunate to win a regional championship as a wrestling coach at Cloverhill, but my passion was football and I want to be a head football coach. So that's what took me to my tenure for seventeen years at Hermitage. Along the way, I got my master's in administration. And so hopefully that is, utilize that in different forms throughout my career. And hopefully that'll be useful here as well as in helping King William. I'm very excited to learn, although I had a small stint, it doesn't give you quite a full taste of King William, but I'm very excited to learn about how, how things are done here and we can raise it to the next level. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, welcome aboard. Sure, I'll take it away. So the new five point two, ladies and gentlemen, is the most recent draft of the proposed code of conduct. And we placed before you a sort of a, a bound or a clipped copy of what Mrs. Waldron and Mrs. Moran and I think is probably ninety-five or more percent complete. And we tried to incorporate some of the feedback that we've received from the school board. And for the folks that might be listening from home, there is a copy of this in board docs that we made available today. And we've presented this information to you tonight as information, for some additional discussion. I'm going to walk you through a few specific areas that, you know, because it is seventy pages. And so I think I can, I can streamline that just a little bit. But we did want to make this available to the public to review as well. And hopefully this is something that we can bring back on June eighteenth for a vote so that we can get this incorporated and get it sent off to the printer and have the appropriate copies that we need made. But just a few things that I'll share with you. Certainly there are the annual corrections that might need to be made as names change and, and things like that. But one of the things that we've done in pages seven through ten, if you'd like to, to follow along, is we've expanded the responsibility section to make that a little bit more descriptive and more inclusive about what we expect from, you know, what the community can expect from the board and what the school board and the schools can expect from students and families and also the information that they should know. And again, feel free to stop me anytime, but between now and June eighteenth, now that you have a paper copy of this, you're welcome to review this more at your leisure, but I'll just run through some of these highlights.
Thank you.
So expanded the responsibility section, pages seven through ten. I've expanded the general notes supporting school board policies on pages ten through eighteen. Those are, it's like a quick snapshot, if someone wanted to know, you know, if there were an area of concern about a student's behavior. There are some real specific areas on pages ten through eighteen that have policy references as well. We've also included information in that section about school staff being able to administer certain medications. And I know that was something that Mrs. Catlett had suggested. Now that we've got these naloxone policies and epinephrine policies that are in our policy manual and certain trained school staff are able to administer those medications, we put some explicit language in the code of conduct that supports that. So that's also in pages ten through eighteen. I'll pause for a moment because this, this is actually the second item in our discussion, which is the attendance regulations, but we've incorporated the attendance regulations in the code of conduct. And that's on pages nineteen through twenty-four. And we also included a phrase on page twenty-one. So Mr. Kellison, if you'd like to go to page twenty-one, the top, the top of that, yeah, perfect, right there. We've got a highlighted area that, that we thought was simple enough to try to capture some of what we talked about at the April thirtieth work session when we had talked about attendance. And that was this notion of some pre-arranged travel. You know, that families that might want to take a vacation or that might have a, a club event, an athletic event, you know, for a club team that would take them out of ti, out of town for a period of time. One of the things that, that I got some feedback from principals is to not have that so open-ended that every trip were approved, because then, you know, feasibly you could have a student that misses an entire quarter. But to, but to limit that to, let's say, five days, so a parent can take a vacation or a few, you know, a, a few days' travel here and there with, with club teams, that sort of thing. And then those five days would be part of what the parent is allowed to just excuse in general. And you can see that in the next paragraph where it says, parents and guardians may submit up to ten notifications due to illness. So you've got ten notifications for illness, five notifications for personal travel, which would be potentially fifteen parent notes right there before anybody would ever even have to go to the, to the doctor and receive some official notification from a physician. So that's one of the bigger changes or the additions that we made to the attendance policy based on the feedback that we received from the board meeting on April thirtieth. But let me just stop there for just a moment and see if anybody has a question or a comment with respect to, to that disclaimer about personal travel.
I have a question about that. My question is, the ten written notifications for illness. I know it's or travel, but is that like ten days, so like a notice per day or yes?
Yes, it would be, it would be up to ten day, oh, so I see what you're saying, like if it were ten notes, each note could be three days and that, is that what you're?
Yeah, so like say my, my child gets COVID, they have to be out for fourteen days. Is that one notification for that instance? Or are my kids already at the fourteen day and they only have one more day?
Yeah, that would be, if, if the, the intent behind that, and we can certainly clarify, would be ten, ten notes would be ten days. Yes. And I think there was a comment, Mr. Farmer, that you made at, at that last meeting, you know, that you get to fifteen or twenty absences. And that's a lot of absences from the school year, so just trying to balance between what's reasonable versus what might be excessive. And then the caveat there, or the disclaimer rather, for the pre-arranged personal travel, family trips, sports, church, club travel. And then you all had talked about requiring the family to provide some sort of documentation for those trips to count, but up, up to five days for those. Is that enough time?
I think so.
I think so too, yep.
And so the way that that paragraph is written is it says ten written notifications to excuse absences due to illness or personal travel. Maybe, another interpretation is you could say ten for illness, five for travel, for fifteen. What would the, what's the board's preference there?
Our preference is not popular, but.
What's your preference?
I mean, I just, I'm, I'm speaking from, you know, experience, like between the whole COVID issue or where, when we all had that lice breakout, like that knocks kids out, like out of the running, like right off the bat. If parents do what they're supposed to and report it and keep their kids home for the amount of time that they're supposed to be home.
Do we have an exemption for COVID?
I mean, I'm sure there's gonna have to be some kind of.
Yeah, I don't think your mic is on.
If, if you go over ten days and it's a legitimate illness, illness that's taken all ten of those days, I'm sure with contact in the school, that can be resolved.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's the point of the waiver process at the end of the year is the, the waiver process isn't necessarily intended to draw a firm line in the sand because there might be a family that provides lots of information regarding hospitalization that's beyond the child's control, all of that would count.
Right.
But, but for, you know, the, the loss of credit that, you know, you know, is, is indicative in this regulation, that loss of credit is for when there is no justification for the absence. It's where, you know, a family might say, he just didn't feel like coming to school for twelve days. You know, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, he just didn't come to school.
I just don't want to punish the parents that actually do the right thing. And I don't know if there's a happy medium, but I mean, I know that I, I, we don't take our kids to the doctors for every single thing. Like if my kids get sick and it's something that we can take care of at home, we keep them home. Like I'm not going to take them to go get a doctor's note, you know, after so many days, just to go pay a co-pay and then go pay whatever else for them to say, oh, it's a virus or it's this, it'll pass, there's no medication for it. I think that's just the things that like other parents have shared.
The things that like other parents have shared with us during this process. So I mean, I, I get, parents are gonna ultimately do what they want to do anyways, but I just, I, and I know, I don't, can't speak for everybody else. I'm not going to fill out a waiver at the end of the year for four children and then try to collect documentation. And it's just very time consuming for parents that are already working, you know, especially for those that are doing the right thing. Because I mean, think, like if you have strep, how many days do you need to keep your kids out of school? If you have COVID, fourteen days, that's automatically, well.
It's only if you have a fever and it's still positive.
For COVID, which I mean, if you are, it's, it can take up to ten days at, at minimum to get out of your system.
But at that point, if you're gonna be at home for ten days, you're gonna at least been to a doctor once, you know. And I'm sure the doctor, when they would write a note, could say, you know, until symptoms pass or whatever on the doctor's note. Until they're not showing symptoms or have a fever.
But like lice, we have really bad lice problems here, that's, could be days that a child is home. And then if your kid comes in contact with somebody else, like then your kid has to be out, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, in a situation like, like those that you're describing, those notes can be taken into consideration. You know, the, I think the waiver process will allow the principals to consider extenuating circumstances. And there's, you know, it's, it's not necessarily on the eleventh absence that a student would lose credit. There's probably, you know, and I, having done this before, there's a threshold where it's, it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, it might not be ten, but it could be that we've got this, I'm sort of making this up, but you can, you can follow along that, you know, if I have a list of twenty-five students that have completed a, a waiver or families that have completed a waiver, twenty-three of them have thirteen or fewer absences, but it's the other two that have eighteen. So maybe my cutoff would be thirteen.
So who's gonna be checking these waivers? Like could we assign this to each person at each school or is it coming to central office?
No, 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 it'd be the school team, the principal, principal, school counselor and a teacher or administrative team.
And that's an additional item that they're willing to take on?
Well, we haven't done it yet, it's a, it's an additional item that we have discussed to see what this process might look like. But, but again, keep in mind that, you know, one of the pieces of data that we share each month is the chronic absenteeism data and all of our schools are over the threshold of what's considered chronically absent. And, and probably not all of those absences are, are hospitalization.
Yeah. My last question is, when you say after so many days, ten days, they lose credit hours. So are we saying that after a student has been out for ten or fifteen days where we won't allow them to do makeup work or?
No, and actually if you go to page twenty-three and that was my next highlight.
Oh, perfect, got it.
You go to page twenty-three, you'll see that we've identified up to eighteen absences, which would be ten percent of the school year. And there might be a student, so here's an example, there might be a student that is hospitalized three times. You know, one for six days, one for seven days, one for four days, all of that would be excused because of the hospitalization, even though they're over the threshold. It's the, that number is really those sort of unverified absences where the family says, I just couldn't get her to come to school, you know?
Yeah, are there going to be exemptions for families in the county that seeking medical attention is against their religious beliefs, so they'll never be able to provide a professional now?
That's certainly something that we could discuss. I mean, the feedback is helpful, but you know, ultimately, what, what, I think what the team here is trying to do is not, not have the absences so open-ended, because it really does create a tremendous amount of work for school staff. Because you get to the, to a certain number of absences and it requires letters and meetings and improvement plans. And if, if there's a way to encourage people to stay in school rather than encouraging them to take the absence,
Yeah.
I think that's the goal.
I want to go back to page twenty-one.
Twenty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I, I'm not particularly fond of parents, parents, like guardians may submit up to ten written notifications to excuse absences due to illness or personal travel. I don't think that, that all personal travel should be on the end of their sentence, up to ten days. I think, I, I understand your point, but I just think that that's going to be confusing to some people and we could wind up doing a whole lot of explanations for that. I think that they, these two things need to be two separate points.
Very good.
That's just my personal opinion, I just, I just think it makes it neater and cleaner.
And so, so the, the bullet above that then, pre-arranged personal travel of not more than five covers it?
That's what I think.
Okay.
That's personal, that's different, that's personal travel.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, I've been, I've been going back and forth in my head with this one several times. I've been going back and forth in my head with this one several times. I don't know that five days is enough, I'm thinking that seven days and I'm gonna tell you why. If I know that my child is gonna be or that we're gonna, we have to be somewhere and we're, we're flying, say we're flying from Florida to the Bahamas and we're gonna leave on, we're flying out Saturday morning, we're gonna leave Friday. So that's gonna be one day. And then the cruise might be seven days or whatever, I mean, might be five days or whatever. And you know, when I get back home on Sunday, me and the kids are not going to school on Monday, so that's a whole seven days. But that's just my personal. I, I, I ju, I just, that's just my personal. It's on, it's two more days, I know, and the kids need to be in school every day. But I'm just looking at from a practical, if I'm planning a trip, I already know, we gonna travel on Friday and we not waiting till the kids get out of school, we gonna travel on Friday and we gonna be tired when we get back on Sunday and we are not coming to school on Monday.
That's probably a lot of truth to that.
I'm guilty of it, I need a day of rest.
So is the consensus seven?
I guess, I mean, my kids don't do competitive cheer anymore, but I can tell you that once spring comes around, they're gonna miss an entire week for Summit and an entire week for Worlds, that's ten days right there. But.
But would that just fall under special circumstances that just need to be discussed with the principal ahead of time?
I think there's gonna be a lot of, you know, some, some discretion here that can be used.
Yeah.
Ms. Frazier, you were gonna say something?
I see Mr. Farmer's point, but we already know that, okay, I'm saying seven, Ms., Ms. Catlett is already saying ten days. So she, we're already, we're already given, if we're given seven, that is the full, a full week.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just.
And then she's gotta, she's gotta discuss with them or, or get another kind of note for those other three days.
Yeah.
And it'll be, because we didn't feel like I'm.
And that's, that's exactly what it's gonna be, it's not gonna be no doctor's excuse or whatever, but I'm just saying, I, I, I just, I just feel that it's gonna be a full week and five days is not a full week.
I mean, I totally support the initiative, so don't get me wrong. Everything that I'm bringing up tonight are things that people have been reaching out to me since we originally spoke about this, so I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, the other thing that we can do, excuse me, this is a regulation. And so regulations can be modified, you know, they're, they're less durable than a policy is.
Yeah.
And, and because a regulation says to the community, this is how we intend to enforce the policy. And the policy says, kids need to come to school every day. But that's not realistic, you know, in many cases. So, so our regulation, you know, we, we can revisit this midway through the year and just sort of see where we are with attendance and, and, and find out if there's gonna be a need to adjust or a need to.
I mean, I mean, that's fine with me, like I think we, I mean, I'm up to explore anything new this year. So if we need to visit it halfway through or give it the entire year and then we compare the data of last year to this coming school year and we find either a happy medium or we're like, oh no, like this might actually be able to meet the goal and continue with that, then I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that I share the concerns of the constituents that.
That's helpful feedback.
Have me, so.
So did I hear?
Standing on seven.
Seven, did I hear seven?
That's fine.
We gonna start an auction?
Where are you?
We have an eight.
They get, well, I, I, I would say it's.
I think seven would be the most.
I think it would be, it, it, it would be too early to go anything beyond seven.
Oh, no, I wouldn't go beyond seven.
And that's difficult to.
I would not go beyond seven, definitely.
Change your, your waiver total?
Uh, no, the, the waiver total could stay where it is at ten percent.
Yeah.
Eighteen. Okay, thanks for that feedback.
One more thing.
Oh, please.
So what if under excused absences? Like page, oh, one twenty.
Twenty.
What if we started off by saying, you know, each student has, what was it, sixteen, eighteen days?
No.
No, it's different for each grade. Nevermind, we'll leave it alone. I was just gonna try to bring the number to the forefront and then be like, the, these are the things that.
We can do that.
Support it.
I can, I can restate the, the ten percent of the school year, sort of, you know, the, the disclaimer about the potential loss of credit.
Yeah, what if we just moved? What if we just moved the section of like number of allowed absences before excused absences? So that's, that way they know what is allowed and then we can go into the excused information. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Anybody else have a preference?
I, I'm okay with that, I'll go with that, but I'm gonna tell you.
Give them a compliment sandwich is how I look at it.
Is that what you're calling?
Yes.
Okay. I say.
Like this is what we're giving you, however.
Give me those days, I'm gonna take them.
Yeah, but you have to meet the.
I don't care nothing about that, we're waiving that out and figure that out later, I'm gonna take them days you gave me, because you said I could have.
So.
How many days? Eighteen days?
However, the parent might not be down for paying the co-pay.
No, I'm not, I, my kids tough it out until they look like they are.
I'm gonna take them eighteen days.
Take them in.
So short of the, the structural change, the substance of this, you're, you're good with?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Because then I think we'll be at a place where we can approve this on the eighteenth.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do think we need to monitor, continue to monitor. Yeah, and I do think we need to monitor, continue to monitor.
Yes.
Attendance.
Mm-hmm.
So my thing, so skipping down to the tardiness.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a consequence for tardiness?
To school or to class?
Just, yeah.
There should be.
Either.
That's so vituried, yeah, that does it a lot.
There, there, there should be.
Cuz I looked at my son's report card, he's an habitual tardier, wherever you wanna put it.
Yeah, so, you know.
And I remember at, at some point in time, like, three or four tardies ended up being an absence, an unexcused absence. I mean, if there's no consequence, then that, why would they stop being late to class?
Yeah, the, the.
Or, or it could, it could be, uh, we wanna get into that, but it could be an, uh, SSI. I mean.
ISS.
Yeah, you know what I'm trying to say.
I mean, I think you got detention.
Yeah.
You can't suspend students for attendance, but you can issue a suspension for a student. That fails to complete a consequence based on attendance. So the state law says you can't suspend, you, you can't exclude a student from school for not coming to school.
No, I don't wanna exclude them from coming to school, I want them to stay after school.
Well, but that's after-school detention, not in-school suspension.
Okay, I, that's what I want, I want them to stay after school and make up that work, because you were tardy, you didn't go to Ms. 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 Amber's math class, so now, and you didn't go for three days, and so now I want you to stay after school and make that work up, and then you can go home.
So I support that also, I also support Saturday detention. You know, the conversation will come up about how do we compensate teachers for some of this time? But.
The breakfast club.
But it, but, but dealing with, dealing with, with tardies and what happens to school or in school is a school issue.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's, that's something that the schools should address.
Yeah, I learned that.
They wanna know that they have school board support.
Yeah, I learned that on the power school thing, I had no idea that had that capability until I accidentally clicked on it, and then I'm like. Wow, so then, of course, I ask, and it's like, well, I was only a couple of minutes late, I'm like, but you were still late. So you're disrupting the class as you come in two minutes late. Because everybody else is sitting there doing what they're supposed to do already.
They all staring like you said.
I mean, technically, for seniors, you could take, or people that drive, you can take their parking passes and they ride the bus. So maybe it's just a long time. But they'll still probably be late.
Yeah, you, you know, and this is, this goes back to the attendance philosophy, attendance is a life skill. You know, being on time and learning to be on time and keeping appointments, and so that's, you know, that's where I think.
All right, get out of my, get out of my corner, you know, I'm never on time for anything.
You willing to stay later, though, aren't you?
Every day.
I know.
Every day.
I think we talked about this last year, and one of the biggest factors that was brought up was what about parents? That have kids at different schools, because the drop-off lines are so long.
Cheese wagon. They don't have to wait in the line.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the reason we provide transportation, it is, the school bus is the only excusable. Transportation delay.
See, traffic is not acceptable.
I saw that on there, or a car malfunction.
Or a dog eating your homework.
Did happen.
Well, now they gotta eat the computer, so.
I was just curious as to.
Yeah, so.
There ought to be some kind of consequence.
Tardies to school, but especially tardies to class, once you're in school, there's, that's a school-based issue.
Okay.
Yeah, like, maybe they just don't participate, so say if they're in middle school, then, and they're like in tilt or something like that, maybe they have to sit out. Participating in something, or, I mean, I don't know, like, what would a parent, my kids have always rode the bus, so, like, what would, I mean, you're. Yeah, but after school?
It worked in our bed.
So, but do we have the staff to support that, and then who's gonna pick the kids up and take them home?
Remember, the other, the other, the other thing is, I know that.
The parents, the parents will let drop them off.
At a point, at a point in the cool springs, we just approved.
What's that?
I was talking to Mr. Farmer, he gonna have to be picking his kid up.
At a point in the cool springs, we just approved the change in the hours.
I'm supportive of whatever.
Yeah, so after-school is a viable option, but you have to supervise the student, and so if a parent says they can't get there until seven. Then you gotta have somebody be able to stay until seven.
How about you ask your administrative staff what their. Perception or opinions are, and then share those with us, and then we can talk about it on the eighteen.
Oh, yeah.
You mean for detention? For the.
Or whatever discipline for tardiness or.
Tardiness.
Interesting idea.
Yeah, I think it's only an issue at middle and high school. You know, where a student would be late to class, and if you get five, if you're late to class five times, there's some school-based consequence.
I think it was three.
That at Cool Springs or whatever.
Yeah. It, it's just, and I'm, I'm speaking for the administrators, because, because the, the activity bus is tough to run. Because some of our buses have long routes, and, um, you know, it's hard enough to find drivers for these runs, and. And I'm, you know, if a student stayed after until four-thirty, there may or may not be, I mean, we could probably make some activity bus runs work. But it might be a ninety-minute ride home.
Yeah, you can't do that.
Or they go to a satellite stop, something like that, so we, yeah, we've talked about that.
What are y'all thoughts?
We did, at Hamilton Homes, my first year, we did have all the teachers, that was part of their duties, that they had to sign up for. Two after-school detentions, one each semester, and then if there, excuse me, if there weren't any students, of course, they didn't have to stay.
Yeah.
But if the student ended up, I can't get picked up till five-thirty or six, then one of us had to stay. And they released the teacher, and we stayed with the student till.
So you, so I guess basically what it boils down to is you can't require a parent to come pick them up after hours.
There's specific time. Well, you can, you can request, but, but you can't necessarily specify a time.
But do you have to provide them transporta- transportation?
No. No.
But we have a lot of parents that work an hour and a half, sometimes two hours away. So I think the latest that, that we stayed was maybe six, and it was very, very few and far between.
Yeah, there's, there's probably a reasonable time that would make sense, and like what Ms. Waldron is saying, that it became part of the expectations. That's, that's the, that, that's the school solution to that, I think it's a valid solution, but that's the, that's, that's why I say tardies are really a school, a school-based issue.
What time do, uh, people get here in the morning, like cafeteria staff or?
Six, six-thirty?
You could do before school.
They don't have time to watch kids, though.
But the only, the only before school would be for a drop-off, cuz the buses won't get here early.
Yeah. So either a parent would rather drop them off before they go to work early, that way the kid's forced to wake up early. And they'll still be here on time for school.
That could be an option for some, I don't know if that could be a universal option, but we'd have, yeah, let's, we'll, we'll get some feedback.
Come in early, I'm here at seven every day, I've, I've always been here at seven or slightly thereafter. But usually, if they're coming that early, they're getting prepared for the day. And it's not, but handled.
I mean, could those students help?
Well, if you've got, if they're already being disciplined for tardiness, like, what if they're getting up early and coming in early when they're typically late? It's probably not.
Yeah, I don't get up early.
These, these dilemmas have no real easy solutions.
No.
In high school, you can take them for being able to do sports or extra activities.
Yep.
Right? But in middle school, you have to inconvenience parents, cuz they're the ones taking them.
Well, that, yeah, that was the part of.
Two different levels of.
Of discipline, de- detention years ago, cuz the teacher could issue it. And, you know, if you were an athlete, you were thirty minutes late to school, I mean, to practice, then you got trouble when you got to practice too, so. More than likely, you tried to avoid that, especially if you were playing a sport at the time.
Right.
You know, those are all conversations that we can have with the administrators about dealing with that. Okay, um. I added a sec, or we added a section rather on certain required annual notifications to parents. We included information also on athletic eligibility and concussion protocols. Between pages thirty-seven and forty-five, we changed the old confusing section on discipline. And now we've included. The actual behavioral codes and their definitions, and a summary of levels of response. Which are all from, uh, the Department of Education, so these indicate a more narrow. Response range, but it also specifies more specifically how each behavioral category. Has a certain response level.
Mm-hmm.
And then those are defined, there's still discretion for the administrator, based on context, and there needs to be. But at least it, at least it demonstrates to a student or to a parent what. You know, if I am, if I, if I'm misbehaving, let's say in this category, these are the consequences that I can expect.
That's good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. We added definitions for certain consequences, and we also added. A, a well-defined procedure that outlines the suspension process, the expulsion process, and the appeal process for families. And then we maintained but expanded the section that is specific to discipline for students with disabilities. Because their due process protections are a little bit different. Um, so those are the primary highlights from this revision, and I hope you feel that. This is an improvement over the last. The last version, and again, you've got a paper copy, and feel free to mark up and share feedback, but. With the few changes and recommendations that you've shared today, we feel like we can come back on the eighteenth and have a product that. Can be approved.
I like it, are we going to provide the parents any type of form to fill out for when it comes to Narcan EpiPen inhaler? As like a.
In advance. I'm. Um.
Ability reasons.
I'll talk to Mrs. Lewis about that, I, I don't, I don't think a student, you, you mean, you mean if they didn't want that.
Right.
I'll have to, I'll have to look.
Like, I know that we ultimately. Want each student to be successful in the event that something was to occur, but I just. Want to make sure that they at least see the form in here, they sign it, or if they have any questions about it, they'll come back and. Address anything that they.
So remember, she did talk that through, and she said it would be very difficult.
To go through forms and know who wants to.
Someone signed, because if a resource officer did it, they wouldn't have to have any notice to students.
So is the acknowledgement, though, by signing your acknowledgement and receipt of the code of conduct? Sufficient, since it's included in there?
So the feedback that I've received is, again, going back to the medical religious exemption. If we were to administer something to a child, we are going to be sued because it's against their religion. To be provided that medical care, um, what was the other? The other one was, like, if the child already has an underlying condition. And any of those items would negatively impact them in the event of an emergency. That could cause them to lose their life if it was administered, that would be another thing, so I think if there's something in here that makes the parents have a hard stop. Because that way the parents can be like, I need to make sure that I report my child's medical history, or, you know, anything. That they may need to know. I'm sure it'll be very few and far.
They're already have to do that, and they do the registration every year.
Yeah. I just think it would make some parents take it a little bit more seriously.
Maybe it's something harder.
I know it's not, it's going, if there is a medical emergency happening, they are not going to be able to radio somebody. To check through records and stuff like that, but I do think that if these things are filled out correctly. We may only have a handful.
Exemptions.
Yeah, that are like, no, and we would know those names.
But they have that form online, when they complete it, or they're a new student, that is one of the things they have to complete.
Yeah, I do, I know that.
Okay, I just want you to know that, that we're covered because that.
Yeah.
A lot.
Mm-hmm. But I think it's different, because now we're introducing new items that we'll be able to administer. And if something was to happen.
Well, there, there is a, um, there is a disclaimer that, that relieves the school division of any liability. If the trained individual responds in good faith. And for something like Narcan, as an example, there are no negatives, known side effects to Narcan. And you can't, you also can't over, um, administer. Um. But, but if the, if the professional has been trained, and they administer and, and respond and administer in good faith. The school division is released from liability. And I think that's, that's explicit in the policy itself. But, but now this is required by law, you know, when, when we heard that the other day, that the schools. The schools have to have at least two doses of Narcan. And if you had a trained individual on staff and the individual failed to administer. You know, even if the parent didn't want it, but the individual failed to administer, that, that could be a problem.
But they also said that we had to add it into our curriculum too, and have somebody teach it, and that it would not be mandatory, but.
You mean, the education?
Correct.
Right, right. I mean, it's, you know, school, schools are being asked to do an awful lot today that they weren't, that they weren't asked to do.
Yeah.
A long time ago.
Can I share something real quick?
Yeah.
Sure, you wanna step?
I went to, no, I got a good enough voice.
Well, I'm worried about the folks at home.
Um, I'm good. I went to, we went to, um, the Virginia Council of Administrators for Special Ed Training last week. And I went to substance abuse breakout session. And there was about seven of us in there, and the lady sitting in front of me, I don't remember where she was from, but she said that. They are almost on a daily basis at their school using Narcan. Because they're having so many overdoses, that they've taken the bathroom doors off stalls, so that the students can't go in and lock them. Um, and she had given, uh, they lost a fourteen-year-old three weeks ago now. And she had given the week before we went to the case, uh, had to give a student Narcan, because they had overdosed. And she said that not only is all of their staff training, but they're actually training the students now also. So that's how bad it has gotten.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I think she was from Northern Virginia, the lady that did the training was from Paul City. Falls Church City, I always get that back.
Falls Church.
And, um, she said that they are also having, because it's a very affluent section in Northern Virginia.
It is.
That they're also having quite a few students at this school building that's overdosing right now. So I know there's a concern about the Narcan.
Mm-hmm.
However, dead, dead's dead. And if you have a student that you have signs and symptoms that a, a child has OB. You're gonna be doing CPR, and there's probably less of a chance of getting that child to regain consciousness if you don't give that Narcan. But it was just, I was horrified at the stories that I heard from these other schools' systems around the state. With the amount of students that they have overdosing, that they're not suspending those students, because they're getting them right into rehab. But I also found out that our students with disabilities and our students of the EL population, it is worse trying to get them into facilities. Especially our EL kids, because they don't have the staff to communicate with them. And they're not, they're not getting them in as quickly, and therefore they're overdosing faster. So to throw that out.
So. So. I wrote. If I'm understanding correctly, that you would like. Somewhere in that section to. Include a requirement for parents to notify the school of underlying conditions or, or an opt-out.
Here for them to sign for each. Additional thing. So like albuterol consent, Narcan consent, EpiPen consent and just have it.
So individualized consent.
So it's also gonna be online is what we're looking at doing. The only thing that makes me very nervous outside looking in on this. Is I don't know if you ever go in and you read, oh, there's like five page returns of. And conditions, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna gamble it and go ahead and click it and move on. I worry unless we are telling them to put something in there and not be in a sign-off. That they're all gonna sign off on that. Does that make sense? Without putting, so that to me sounds like. Does that need to be in the same format, Dr. Wagner, to ensure that the parents are really reading? That and that not being locked. With the code of conduct, but being a separate thing that maybe is on paper. To get it out there. Does that make sense?
Well, are they signing the code of conduct?
It's gonna be electronic and they're gonna have to click on it. And it'll be available online.
So could we not just provide a toggle that says yes, no? And you have to be, you have to make sure that they answer it.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're working on that. Now that I've more clearly understood the individual items that you want folks to consent to. Those, it may just be some additional props as folks go into, it's, we're, we're thinking about this. As part of the Power School Registration that every family has to do and, but if we can add some of those individual consent items, we'll get with Ms. Bubba.
Yeah, cuz if we're gonna have to create. A policy and a D and do the DOE curriculum. For the Narcan and opioid prevention, like I don't want parents to be surprised either when they're like, well, we didn't see anything about this. You know what I mean? So if. I don't know.
And we're, I think we're a year or two out from that.
Yeah.
But, but, but you're right. Yeah, that's, that's, that's good awareness. Okay, well, um. Well, so the information that's in the code of conduct though, as it's written in there.
It's fine.
We're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, cuz we, we just wanna make sure that we get, we get the information needed. Very good. Any other feedback?
So will you make some of those adjustments by the eighteenth and get the feedback from the staff? Prior so that we can.
Yes, I've written down feedback on strategies and consequences for tardiness.
Okay.
And I wrote, um. The section in the attendance that moves the total number of allowable absences up.
Five to seven.
The.
Sure.
Movement is that those.
Five to seven, right?
And then five to seven, yes, had that written down too. And I think we can get this done quickly enough, maybe even before Thursday. The, the, the tardies, I'm, I'm not sure if I would specify what the tardy. Consequences, what the specific one is gonna be for the school in a regulation. I would just be broad and say. There can be consequences for excessive tardies. I think we've said that in here.
Yeah.
But we can get some feedback for folks to share. On the eighteenth.
Can.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Can I be a thorn?
Yes, you may cuz that on every rose there is a thorn.
Thank you so much. That's why I love you. Okay, so I, this is just, this is just. The logo that's on the front of this. That's on the front of the student code, okay. Is this logo just? King William County Public Schools logo or are we using the King William County logo and just adding the public schools to it? I ask that because you know, King William County now has a new logo. That was designed by one of our students. They actually submitted three different logos, one first, second and third place and their first prize. One was chosen. So if we don't, if, if that's what we're using, I'd like to see the new county logo. But if this is, this is King William Public Schools logo, I'm good with it.
Well, thi- this is the, this is the one that the school division has been using.
Mm-hmm.
However.
But I didn't know because this was the King William old logo. I didn't know if that was. Why?
That's a good question, Ms. Fraser. I'm not sure if I have an answer, although I would like to propose that. We allow or begin a competition this fall for students to design a new school division logo.
It's.
No, it's not.
This is the same logo as the county.
That's not the county's new logo.
I know, but I, but you had asked, is this the same logo that the county was using? And yes.
But the county has a new logo.
Yeah, they do. So. Good night. I think our, I, I, I'd like to see our school division have its own new logo.
Perfectly. I just wanted to. Get that out there.
Extra assignment for you, sir.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Okay, so are we, can we move on?
Yes.
I'm good.
We, we have taken care of the attendance section. The third one then is dress code. If I am.
I think I looked at that in here already. I think we're good on that.
Yeah, the dress code hasn't changed since it was first presented on April thirtieth. Is the group ready to move with that?
Yeah.
And, and we'll, uh.
It just needs to be enforced.
Correct. Would you, would you like this to? To be an item that just gets voted on with the other items on the eighteenth?
Yeah, cuz it looks like it's just for discussion right now.
Okay, very good. Okay, and then the last discussion item on the agenda.
Was that included in the student code of conduct also?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the, the two-page policy was not. The summary is.
Okay, okay.
And then there's a reference to the. To the, to the new policy.
I'm seeing it now. Okay, I'm good.
And then the only other discussion item. Was the item that was shared back, uh, I believe the first time on. In, in late April, April thirtieth, I believe, was. A proposed regulation for the board to consider for superintendent evaluation. And whether. The board had any feedback. I was gonna share with you i- i- if it's, if it's something that, and again, it's a regulation, which means it's malleable and flexible and. And you know, you can, you can adapt. Um, if this is something that you'd like to approve or adopt this evening, I can provide each of you with. The forms that you would need as individuals and as a group. I can have, you know. Ms. Huterson and I can print them and get them ready to you or email them to you. So we could start that process now if we wanted to try to adhere to the timeline that suggested, which says June, by June thirtieth. Um, we would need to schedule, or you would need to schedule. You know, some additional, at least one additional closed session, maybe two. If that's the route that you wanted to, to travel, but I would also, I was gonna share with you is, I'd like to provide. Um, a first year update to the board and to the public at our upcoming meeting on the eighteenth, just to have. Just to, you know, to prepare something for the public.
Okay.
Won't yet have final student performance results. Um, we, we've, we've got some incomplete accreditation data right now, but. That's probably gonna come a little bit later in the summer. But I can. Hopefully give some preliminary. Information on student performance where we've ended up in the spring. But if this is something that you'd like to bring back on the eighteenth, you know, that's, you know, I understand that as well. I just am trying to. Help the board with a process for. Superintendent evaluation because there isn't one right now.
Problem with that?
What do we wanna do, gentlemen?
We don't have it as an action item, so if anybody needs more time to review it.
Well, I, I support evaluation forms of all type for everybody. So I'm, I'm in support of that.
And, and technically. This is a regulation that doesn't require board approval. Um. So we can, we can move, you know. It's been, it's been my practice to bring regulations to the board for acknowledgement and approval if you wish, and that's why this one is there. But I certainly don't wanna start a process that the school board isn't ready to support. And that's the reason why, you know, we bring these for discussion. But if you'd like, if this, if you feel comfortable, if, if. The majority of you feel comfortable moving forward with this tool and this process as it's presented here, I can. I can give you what you need and.
I mean, I still just want the capability to talk to. Others as well and include that. In the feedback.
You sure?
If you are okay with that.
Sure.
Okay.
You mean just? Just anecdotal feedback from other folks? Yeah, you call him whoever, just don't speak to Ms. Huterson.
So I think, um, we have, some of us have discussed it, if not all of us, um, I know that we were hung up on the surveys and them being anonymous. Um, but I think that we. Came to a conclusion of how those would be administered and received back and it would be a hundred percent anonymous. Um, some of them offered to speak to people in person, um, but I mean, as we mentioned last time, it would just be. People from some of the initiatives that you've started. We wanna know like how they're going, you know, um. You know, if changes are really happening and how they feel about things, um. And that the goals that you set forth for those committees or whatever they are that they are making headway and people are enjoying them.
Would you like me to give you the members of those committees?
Yeah, I mean, we don't need all of them. I think just i- is there like a lead on those or? So like student, I think it was what, student, parent, teacher? Right?
Yeah.
And what?
I would have those.
Okay, and we can always skip her.
Okay.
Um.
That way.
Yeah.
Completely anonymous.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm willing to do this. Everybody else? So we're gonna move forward with it? Okay. We're good.
Okay, very good. And.
Me.
So we're moving forward with that, um, um.
Tool.
To put on to the, uh, in the make policy manual, right?
Uh, yes, yeah, CBGR.
Okay.
Yeah, because it, because if we have a, if we have a nod from the board, that's fine.
All right. Um, then I think we have the personnel report next, which there was nothing that we needed to vote on, correct? Because we didn't have anything.
Correct.
Um, matters of the board.
I have, I have two matters. If you don't have anything.
With me.
Or if you want me to go first.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I know, I've been talking a lot tonight.
You haven't.
Hmm. Okay, so, uh, the first thing is, um. Dr. Wagner and I serve on the opioid, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
The, the opioid settlement.
Thank you.
Committee.
And, um, they had a meeting this past Friday. And they are, um, trying to get ready to move forward with some of the initiatives. And one of the first things that they wanna do is they want to do a town hall. Where they would have, they would invite citizens to come and to give input as to what kinds of things they think that is needed. Um, to help spend the opioid money that we have, that the county has received, um, so far. You know, what kind of services are needed, you know, just, just all kinds of things. They just wanna get some feedback from the citizens. And one of the things that they talked about is having a space or needing a space. Um, for the town hall and, um, they will be requesting. King William County will be requesting the opportunity to use probably this room.
Okay.
Um, to do that and they're looking at the end of July. And I told them that I would mention that so that if we had some free dates. That we could go back and, and you know, give them some dates that we might have that were free for the use of the room now. The reuse of the room would be.
Free for people to come.
Right.
Got it.
We don't want, I don't, like if we got a baseball meeting or something else on a night, we don't wanna, you know, tell them that night and whatever. So the, the last week in July is the week that they're looking at right now. So if you would look, check calendars.
And is, does the last week begin the twenty ninth?
That's a good question.
Got it right here.
Yeah, no.
Cause the third is a Saturday.
So it's.
So it would be the twenty.
You could do the twenty second through the twenty sixth.
Or if it's Saturday, right? July?
I don't know.
They want to do a Saturday?
No, they didn't, they didn't give a night yet because they.
Twenty ninth of July is a Monday. So you have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of that, or if you mean a full week, it would be the twenty second through the twenty sixth.
They, they didn't give, cuz they don't even know yet what kind of date they want. I mean, what kind of, which night they might want during the weekend, it's. It's very preliminary.
Sure.
But we're just looking to basically to be able to tell them, hey, we know that you can't use this day because it's not available.
We'll look at some options.
Yes.
And then Wendy, and then.
And the, the next, the next meeting is June thirteenth at one o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
For that, um.
So we'll bring some dates to that meeting?
Probably. That sounds good.
I don't think of right now, cuz I do this, I don't think of there being anything. I'll have to double check back around with Tony. The question would be, is what would you need? Like if you would need equipment and to be able to access that stuff. Cuz that could make things a little bit different.
We can definitely find that out when we have the meeting on the thirteenth.
Yep.
But I know one of the things that they're gonna, they would do and this will be, it's gonna be, they're gonna want tables and chairs. Because the format that they had. They're borrowing a format from Gloucester County. We met the two gentlemen from Gloucester. The format that they're using was they had different people. Sitting at tables, different groups of people sitting at tables and they had a facilitator at each of the table and then at the end they reported out. Like they had a speaker or whatever in the very beginning and then at the end, and then they broke up into the little groups and then they had.
Cause I'm also pretty sure Tony's out at the end of that month too. So those are just things, that's why I was, wanted to ask, double check on that because. Like by when y'all go to that June meeting, if you could get every last detail, because the form really needs to be sent in before then.
They, I, I'm, I'm almost positive that I will not have information prior to that meeting.
No, I mean that June meeting, not.
You mean our June meeting?
No.
No, they're.
I, I'm almost, I'm almost positive that I will not have information from. King William County prior to June thirteen.
We'll, we'll, we'll make it work.
I can talk to them, but I'm almost positive that we will not. And we can talk about that later.
So are you on it for our school and she, you're on it for your job?
Yes. But however, this past Friday I represented our school board because. You were at the law meeting?
Mm-hmm.
He was at the law meeting. So I represented the school board.
So.
And my job.
And, and I'm, I'm, I'm glad that you're, that you're bringing this up cuz there really hasn't been much information up until this last, you know, this last meeting, but the county. Like, like most counties, all counties in Virginia have received as part of the class action settlement. Due to the opioid crisis, most communities have received, um, some money from that settlement. And I believe Gloucester had, I mean, uh, yeah, Gloucester had access to. Over six hundred thousand dollars and, and the money goes to the county. Um, and King William, the initial access, uh, I think it's believed to be about a hundred and forty thousand, something like that.
It's a little more than that now.
A little more than that now and, and it's going to be, uh, those funds will continue to be available. Over time, so it's not just one lump sum. It's like a down payment toward. Toward future, future payments. And the communities, there, there are, uh, certain restrictions on how those funds can be used. And in some cases, the community, you know, brings a representative group together and they determine what they might wanna use. So it's community education or if it's, uh, like a drug abuse counselor for the local school division or something like that. You know, there, there are several options, I guess a whole menu of options that can be considered. But I think the committee is at a point now where it would at least like to be able to educate the community on what. On what the, the, the funds that King William has and what the uses of those funds. and what the uses of those funds are, and then get an idea from the community as to how those funds should be spent.
So two questions. One, is the one forty for both King William and West Point? So we have to split it.
And so it's, so it's, it's King William.
It would have to be split levy, because anything we get, they also get a percentage. So if we get the one forty, then they'll get what, twenty percent of that?
I have no idea.
Well, I think, and that's one of the reasons why, if I'm understanding correctly, the town hall would be, it's, it's not going to be a town hall in each location, it would be one.
It, my understanding from the meeting on Friday was it was gonna be one town hall now.
Okay.
How long has this committee been? Meeting?
This, I think, was the third time.
I don't know, they've been meeting for a while. I was not involved in it.
Yeah. I've been involved in two sessions.
And I've been involved in maybe this was my third one?
So do we need to have somebody from the board represent as well, or have an alternate like we do the other committees?
Well, it's, it's not a school board committee. Um, I think it's a, it's a county committee that's asking for community representation. I can find out from Mr. Ashcraft if he'd like a board member. I don't know, Mr. Ashcraft is the only representative from the county board, is that right?
Yes, he's the only representative, him and then the finance person.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the only one from that.
But sure, his sheriff's there.
On the committee was the, um, or on this committee was the sheriff, social services. Finance, West Point Schools, King William Schools. The C S B. I'm trying to go around the table and think. Um, there was somebody there, there was somebody there this last time from both fire departments, both West Point and King William Fire Departments. Um, the Commonwealth Attorney is there or has been at some of the meetings, she wasn't at the last one. That's all I can recall is being there in the times that I've been. And they asked me because, they asked me to participate because of my connection with D J J and the youth and the young people. That's why they asked me to participate, because I, I, I don't do any to with opioids at all. But they, they did want to use the school for, so I told them I would share that information.
So I guess then in the meantime, you can connect with her name Wendy? What did you say her name was? I thought you said Wendy. So I guess email whoever and say, hey, we're interested in hosting it here, can you let us know what you would need? Like, do you need A V, do you need internet, how many tables, how many chairs? And then we can ask them what date they're looking at and then we can check the availability. I mean, it's better to be proactive than wait.
My concern is that there's only certain people that can be behaving.
And then they each act as to be turned on.
Yeah, so that's why I was saying that I, as much information early on, because it's vacation time, like I said. And Tony, I'm pretty positive is out that week on vacation, which is fine, he'll get his team. But you know, there's other people like somebody from I T to be able to be here to run that stuff.
I'm thinking that we will have information.
With their power points.
I'm thinking that we will have information by our June June eighteenth meeting, but I know that they weren't planning to do any planning until they had the June thirteenth meeting, so that's why I said that they don't.
That's, that's fine with me, as long as you come right after that meeting was what I was saying.
I'm thinking we will, we, we can, we will probably have information by June eighteenth. But I would doubt seriously if we would have information before June thirteenth.
I think it just, the, the, the coverage of the I T is what's key and making sure.
Right.
Somebody's not on vacation.
And I'll make sure that I, I take that back and.
Well, Mr. Kellison can train me.
Okay.
O M G.
Jacob on traits.
Man of me. Whistle makers sit in the corner.
I'd be going on vacation right then.
Okay.
And, and so I, I, I'll share with you that I ju- just on Sunday evening, got an email from Mr. Ashcraft asking Dr. Frazier and me to get, to get together to talk about what a community meeting might look like, so. That's.
So he was supposed to get, send you and Dr. Frazier an email about that, and he was supposed to send you and Dr. Frazier an email about, um, um, having um, something at the individual schools and what you thought about for, uh, later on. Not at this first town hall, but later on, and what you thought about. Um, cause I know it had been tossed back and forth a couple of times about having a counselor.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
For the two schools. So that was, that was one of the things, because Gloucester shared with us how we could get some extra money and maybe able to do that. And some other grant sources that may be able to help fund, um, a counselor to be shared between the two schools.
And, and I don't know the extent that split levy would factor into that, but, but it might if they're grant funds, I don't know.
I, I, I don't know, but they, they were, they were looking at all of that. Alright, I got one other thing. So I know back a while ago, you shared with us about the absentee reporting system that would help, um, Miss, um, Candy or Harvey with, 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 um, sending out letters and scheduling appointments and it. Were, were we able to keep that in the budget? Are we moving forward with that, or is that something we had to put on hold?
Well, we, so the system that you're talking about is one that it's an automated system that sends the required attendance letters to the family. So we've had several meetings with that with the representative from that company, the most recent one was last Thursday with principals and, um, so she came, she's from Northern Virginia, but came down here and gave an onsite presentation. We currently have some grant funds as part of the all in. If, if, if you remember the all in grant funding that came from Governor Yonkin, we've earmarked a certain amount of funding for attendance support. But whether that attended support would be a person or a product, we hadn't quite decided. And so, uh, Mrs. Davis and Dr. Bassett and I are going to meet tomorrow to review feedback from Thursday.
Okay.
To find out if this is a direction that we'd like to go. So just to, to share with the other board members. You know, and we were talking about this with attendance, when students accumulate a certain number of absences, we're required to send letters. And in some cases, students might receive two or three or four letters, but it, you know, it's sixty five cents each and somebody has to print it and and stuff it and mail it. The high school has an attendance associate, Mrs. Spicer, she, she handles all the high school attendance. But the other three schools, it's just done in-house with the office staff and the feedback that we received Thursday from the schools is it probably takes a couple hours a week of administrative time where we believe that the product that this company has, and the company's called um, called School Status, and it's not a, it's not a huge, uh, contract per se. But there are a number of companies that, you know, that can can help with these services, but they do all of the postage, all of the mailing, and they do all the electronic communication with the families for that. For those that required communication that, you know, that the state code requires.
How much is it?
This company is, it's, they, they charge by division, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for the division. Whether or not that's a direction that we want to go, um, is yet to be determined, because we might need to open that up and to receive, you know, some other bids for, for those services. But currently, I guess where I, I, I'm say all of that to say that currently, we have to use administrative time and resources to handle those responsibilities where if we pay the fee, this company would handle those responsibilities for us. And it integrates with Power School and has a pretty robust tracking system. But at the end of the day, it's still going to require, uh, you know, Mrs. Harvey Candia to, to process some some paperwork, so just trying to get some feedback from principals about the direction that they might want to go. To get back to the question that you asked about funding is we could use grant funds maybe for one year, but then after that, we would need to figure out how to sustain it. So that's, that's going to be our problem, I think, moving forward with a lot of what we're trying to do is sustainability. So this company, uh, has worked with, um, primarily with Prince William County here in Virginia, they have ninety-one thousand students, and they have reduced their chronic absenteeism rate this year by using this particular vendor and the tools that this vendor provides, but that's the only example uh, in Virginia that this company has at the moment, but, but she's, you know, there are a lot of school divisions that are interested in this product. Yeah, attendance, like we, we're talking about before, takes up a lot of time. A lot of time. And the more kids are out, the more time it takes.
Yep.
So I don't yet have a recommendation about what we might want to, to do, want to do. The high school might be a different story because they have an individual that can you know, that's devoted to doing a lot of that important work. Uh, but the fee that we would have to pay if we were to go this route would be for the whole division. So that's one of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow, is it, is it worth the cost? Okay.
That's a quarter of a person.
Right?
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
I think the other thing that we have, um, which I don't think is on here, is our regularly scheduled school board meeting is on Tuesday June eighteenth. Correct, yeah. So, um, we will meet at our regularly scheduled time here at Hamilton Homes in the cafeteria. Believe our closed session will be from six to seven as normal, um, and then the meeting will start at seven o'clock. Um, but that is all I have.
I, I did have one quick thing. I had a parent ask about Canvas versus Power School for their trying to keep up with assignments and how they don't match. Is that? I've never, I, I'm gonna be honest, I've never looked at Canvas, it was always, I always checked the Power School. Um, is there a way for them to sync, or can one be done away with so that it's not two different ones, are they two different purposes, or how, how do they work?
Yeah, it's, it came up in this, in your support meeting. It's, so I learned something new recently that a teacher has to sequence, like they have to release it. So I asked this question in that support meeting because I was struggling as a parent because my kid's saying that he turned something in, but it's showing missing. And then in Canvas at the high school, they typically lock theirs and don't unlock it at all. Okay, but then your, your middle school, they're online, but none of them match. And it's because a teacher has to, they put their grades in, but until they sync it which most only do once a week if you're lucky. If they're, if, if they're diligent about it, this is what the teachers were. If you're diligent about it, you do it at least once a week.
Right.
But I can't say that that's.
For Power Schools?
Th- this is for, it, it seeks to get, so if, if you don't sync the one like, but once a month, it's always gonna have a difference. Because I was trying to understand that as a parent, and I asked in that meeting. There's a lot of question around that too, of where like, I wasn't here yesterday, but it may, they may have popped it as missing, my grade goes down because it gets a zero, however, I wasn't there.
Right.
And then it doesn't get fixed until it gets graded, and so there's a lot of, a time lapse in there.
Is there any way to fix that or adjust it or?
I think that's a maybe curriculum question to get information on.
Okay. Yeah, so, so Canvas is more of the daily tool. Pow- Power School is our student information system, Power School has a grade book, but the grade book only knows what Canvas tells it.
But because they lock it, it doesn't go over.
Yeah, so there are some things, if a, if a, if a teacher, if a teacher has certain settings in Canvas, Canvas might show something different than Power School shows.
Well, is there any way to make that more compatible, or yeah?
Well, I'm sorry.
You're fine, I'm just listening.
And, and, and I don't think there's one universal approach. Because it might be, you know.
So a lot of it seems like it depends on whether the teachers.
And so, and some of this also depends on your grading philosophy, where, you know, and, and I I don't necessarily agree with all grading philosophies out there, but if my strategy is, I'm going to give each student a zero for work that's not turned in yet, even though I know that they're, that they, that they're sick at home, I give them a zero. That might show in Canvas, but might not show in Power School, the Power School grades might be two weeks old where the Canvas, Canvas is more, um, interactive and but that communicates maybe the wrong information if a parent is only looking at Power School for grades, that Power School might not necessarily.
The, the one that, she was more concerned about, I guess she was using it to make sure her son was keeping up with his assignments. So she was looking at one and this assignment wasn't on this one, but it was on the other one, and you know, so that's where her concern was at.
Yeah, sure, and you, you know. Canvas, a, a, a teacher, a teacher can, can make, can create conditions in Canvas that don't get communicated through Power School.
So it sounds like to me that parents probably need to relay to the teachers which one they're gonna use and prefer.
Yeah.
Before the beginning of the.
I think, I think if there are ever questions about grainy, it's to ask, it's to find out from the teacher how he or she uses both tools.
Right.
What is the best tool for that parent to use to help monitor a student's performance?
Okay.
Now, I think we can, we, we can create some guidance. Um, maybe one of my follow-up questions will be, do we have any guidance, let's say at the high school level for how each is used? And it might be different in math, that could have a daily grade in a different way than an English class does also, so there's lots of nuances to it, but but the comment about both not being consistent has come up before. And I'm not sure if there's a universal way to solve that problem.
Okay.
I think people who were used to schoolology before and it talks to one another, so it hasn't been much different. If you are a computer, if you're smart on the computer, that's something you notice when it's switched. But it, Canvas, I've heard a lot of parents complain about not understanding of this. It, I think it's a universal, it maybe could be a great option for I T artists to do a town hall on it before school starts or right after school starts, because there's a lot of communication.
Right.
That they complained about, but it, it's confusing on their end.
It might not be a bad idea.
It's just you see it differently from the work end to the parent.
Right.
Good opportunity.
Yeah. That was all.